Okay, it's 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting of the Township of Addison Planning Commission to order. It is May 13th, 2025. We are located at the Addison Township Hall on Rochester Road in Leonard. If you all would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary Lundee, would you call roll, please?
Mark Smith?
President.
Jenny Eller?
Here.
Derek Musgrave?
Here.
Secretary Lundee? Here. Vice Chair Benz?
Here.
Chair King?
Chair King here. Linda Garrick is, I guess we'll count that as an excuse to absence. Next order of business, announcements and correspondence. We did receive some correspondence. We received a letter from Bill Chomi regarding the wording of Article 4, which is Item 2B on your agenda, that correspondence, like all correspondence, is available for review in the township offices during normal business hours. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Chair King?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benz?
Here.
Secretary Lundee?
Yes, I mean.
Secretary Lundee, yes. Derek Musgrave?
Aye.
Jenny Eller?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the April 8th, 2025, meeting minutes. I have no comment on them. So I'm willing to open up, again, ask or request a motion for approval of the minutes.
I move to approve those minutes.
A second.
Can't we just have a general aye or no? All in favor? For something like this?
Oh, actually, well, we can discuss that when we get to the bylaws, as a matter of fact.
A second.
Roll call vote.
Chair King?
Aye, yes.
Vice Chair Benz?
Yes.
Secretary Lundee? Yes. Derek Musgrave?
Yes.
Jenny Eller?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes. The minutes are approved. Moving on to Item 2. We have four sub items in Item 2 of ordinance reviews for the Planning Commission to take an action or have a recommendation on the following. I'd like to take these one at a time and lead off with each of them, asking the planner to just give a quick summary of what we're looking at doing here.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, last meeting, we held a public hearing on these four ordinance amendments. The first being Article 4.49 to delete and replace some language regarding open space preservation. As noted, that is something that is required under the Zoning Enabling Act. But we wanted to clean it up and tidy it up, as well as accommodate the additional changes that were being made to the community wastewater and utility system, which is Article 4, as well as these changes needed for schedule regulations. And then the Article 25 deletion of the PUD altogether, which is not a required section under the Zoning Enabling Act. The community wastewater utility system is, there was discussion at the last meeting from the public hearing, there was concerns over whether or not that would create any problems for existing facilities that are of that nature. And we noted that it would not be a problem, that it would not have any issues or challenges related to that specifically for the golf course site due to the consent judgment and the consent order requiring the systems that they have. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But this will be the meeting, if you choose, so choose, to move these forward with a recommendation to the Township Board for approval or adoption.
Okay. I'd like to handle them one at a time, so we can keep our, any questions we might have orderly. And I'd also like to handle those as part of discussion on a motion. We'll also have the discussion first. Does anybody have any issues they'd like to bring up with the deletion of the existing and replacement of Article 49, open space preservation?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to propose a wording change addition before we adopt it. Originally, it read in paragraph 3, the second to the last sentence under restricted land dedication, restrictive covenant, or another legal mechanism that runs with the land. I'd like to propose we insert the language that is recorded after the word mechanisms, such that it reads dedication, restrictive covenant, or another legal mechanism that is recorded and runs with the land. That change was proposed or talked about at the first meeting. The Township Attorney has reviewed it and approved it and said that that would be fine. That would be my motion before we discuss approving or denying.
Which is, I believe, how it's actually currently shown in the replacement page.
You put it, or I think the correspondence that you and I had was to put it in both versions, because we needed to talk about it as commissioners and make sure everybody was on board, because that was not discussed at the public hearing as a board.
It was not, but if you just address that, everybody confirms that that is recorded, should be added, it's still highlighted, that should suffice, because it is now in front of you with those three words.
So it doesn't take a motion to change it?
No, because it's in front of you with those three words. I would definitely have the consensus that everybody agrees with what you proposed.
Any other comments? I'd like to entertain a motion to delete the existing Article 449, open space preservation, or replace it with the modified streamlined one that is currently in your package, which includes the language that Mark was speaking of.
I'll second that. No, go ahead.
Any further discussion? Could have a roll call vote, please.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Jenny Eller?
Yes.
Derek Musgrave?
Yes.
Secretary Lundee? Yes. Vice Chair Benz?
Yes.
Chair King?
Yes. Okay, that has passed. On to Article 2B, Article 4, community wastewater utility system. As the planner noted, this is a new regulation that we're recommending the township adopt that restricts construction of any new community wastewater systems. Is there any discussion from any of the Planning Commission members?
No.
I have a question. Do we need to add any language in there that talks about grandfathered, you know, systems that are already in play, or as the correspondence talked about?
The Township Attorney didn't feel that needed to be done, that those systems that are grandfathered, or as was discussed, are covered under their legal structure of the consent judgment. As far as our ordinance is concerned, that will, our ordinance will govern anything from this day going forward. And anything that is governed prior to that by any court measure will remain as such.
Grandfathered in?
Yeah, unless at some point in time that consent order were to be terminated, or they were supposed to, they were doing something that would be so outside or different from what they're ordered to do under consent, then that might play. But the way it's written now is attorney stamped and approved and will not affect them.
Justin, does that include any additional expansions to that area later on?
I can't say yes, I can't say no. What I can say is if it's expansion that's as part of their consent judgment, then that would not be part of this ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
We're modifying these now, but if something like this discussion comes up later on down the road that we didn't foresee, that caused a big problem for enough people, can we easily convene and modify them again to support that? Or does it take a special session?
Well, we're not the actual modifying authority. The Township Board is. We're simply recommending to them. But there would be, there could be a process if necessary. If some future set of circumstances so made it that way, and it would, it's certainly not outside the our possibility.
Again, if there was too many problems and that the ordinance was too restrictive or created too many issues, then the Board could always send it back here for consideration or change.
It'll depend on the legal.
Right.
Any other comments from any of the board members? Okay, in that case, I'd like to get a motion from someone to adopt Article 4, community wastewater utility systems.
I move we adopt it.
They have a motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Jenny Eller?
Yes.
Derek Musgrave?
Yes.
Secretary Lundee? Yes. Vice Chair Benz?
Yes.
Chair King?
Yes. Well, we had Article 2C, Article 24, schedule regulations to amend Sections 2401B, 2401C, 2401H, and 2401E. And if you read that, you'll see that's pretty much just to account for the fact that we instituted Article 4. And is there any discussion on the Board's part prior to taking this up? Hearing none, I request a, someone propose a motion to adopt the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt.
Second it.
Could a roll call vote, please?
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Jenny Eller?
Yes.
Derek Musgrave?
Yes.
Secretary Lundee? Yes. Vice Chair Benz?
Yes.
Chair King?
Yes. Finally, on to Item 2D, Article 25, the PUD, which would be deleted. There's not a requirement under state zoning law that we have such an article. And we would list that Article 25 is reserved for any particular future use. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, in that case, could I ask for a motion to delete Article 25?
Make a motion.
Seconds?
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Jenny Eller?
Yes.
Derek Musgrave?
Yes.
Secretary Lundee? Yes. Vice Chair Benz?
Yes.
Chair King?
Yes.
Kind of gets to you after a while.
Yeah. Is she here? The next item we have on our agenda is a review of the Planning Commission bylaws. The Planning Commission bylaws have been reviewed both by our planner, Justin Sprogg, and also by our attorney, Bob Davis. There's a couple items in there that I would like to call to your attention that we should perhaps... What?
Excuse me, I had my hand up, but I didn't know you were reading. I wanted to get something in the record.
You have your opportunity into public forum, which is a couple items down the road. But there is a public forum where you'll be able to address the Board. The Planning Commission bylaws, there's some language in there in paragraph 1 where it talks about the composition of the Board, and particularly that the ongoing members of the Planning Commission shall, to the extent practicable, represent the major interests in the township, such as agriculture, natural resources, recreation, education, et cetera. My reading of that is that is not a restrictive or an all-encompassing list. Certainly, the idea is having a diverse members of the Board, and which would include other items such as locale, age, and background. As the planner and the attorney had no particular issue with the way that it was currently phrased, I also do not, I just...
Chair?
Yes.
Just to let you and the rest of the Board know, that paragraph is taken directly from the Planning Enabling Act.
Yes.
So it's, it's, and you're right, it's not all encompassing. It's supposed to be a swath or a sampling with some recommendations.
Suggestive ideas.
But that's, that paragraph is verbatim from the law.
Yeah. I, when I read it, I was imagining it would be, it could have been written with an EG in front of it as a, you know, for example.
As the lawmakers.
Other items I'd like to bring up, just as a note, in paragraph 6, we have a desire for a zoning board of appeals representative. With the unfortunate passing of Eric, we at the moment do not have a zoning boards of appeals representative on the Township Board, but I imagine that will be rectified here in the coming months. If I could now draw your attention to items, sorry, paragraph 6 on the agenda. If you'll note on the sequence of items on the agenda, it's, there is a reversal between our normal practice and what the bylaws say. In particular, in that reports appear in the bylaws as occurring before the public forum, but our normal practice is to have the public forum first and then have the reports. I would prefer to have the public forum before the reports, in case that, what we hear, would have some sort of influence on the information that we convey during the reports. I'm curious as to hear any other thoughts on that.
I have no preference.
Makes sense.
It makes sense, yeah, it sounds...
Like a flow.
And the final item I wanted to draw your attention to is Section 3, duties of the Planning Commission on Page 6. Paragraph 3, prepare an annual report to the Township Board. I don't believe that has actually been a normal practice, probably because our bylaws tend to require that we have a Township Board member on the Planning Commission. So the mechanism of feedback to the Township Board is in place and is functioning on a meeting-by-meeting basis. I'm not sure what we would achieve with an annual report.
I can give you an example. Again, the Planning Enabling Act requires that annually, once a year, the Planning Commission provide a report to the Board for the Board to approve that is a one-page memorandum of, this is...
Have we ever done that?
These are the topics that we've seen. This is, you know, we saw three special land uses, had four zoning text amendments, four site plans. Is much, that's generally, you don't have to put an attendance report or anything in it, but state law does require that once a year, those planning commissions do it, you know, review it and approve it or authorize it at their January meeting for the Board's next consideration at their next meeting. But it's part of the state law, and a lot of planning commissions don't do it, but...
I was gonna say, we've never...
Just a once-a-year memo of who we are and here's what we did.
Gonna be real brief?
Cover sheet for...
One page, yeah, I got it. And I'll bring it in.
Well, since it's part of the Planning Enabling Act, I guess we'll have to put that one down on items to track and knock out. So does anyone else have any items they would like to bring to our attention regarding the bylaws and the way we are currently draft structured?
What about the voting?
What about the voting?
Like, I don't think, just Bob Smith used to do it. And just like it, doing the minutes and so forth, you'd just have a general ayes or no nays, and that would be it. And then when we get to the particular ordinances approving, then we go specific.
So the way the bylaws address that in paragraph 5, voting...
What page is that?
Page 4, paragraph 5. Voting shall be by voice vote. A roll call vote shall be required and requested by any Planning Commission member or restricted by the Chair or at the discretion of the Chair.
So it's just discretion?
Each member has a duty to cast a vote on all members, on all matters presented for consideration. I'm willing to, if, make it a, our practice, if the Board is willing to make it our practice, that we certainly vote on all matters that require, for example, forwarding language to the Township Board. But for more administrative matters, agendas, minutes, should just go with a...
Ending of the mini.
Yeah. Just go with a non-roll call vote.
I think it's up to the Chair, so you really don't...
It's up to you?
It's up to the Chair or the PC.
Right, I wasn't looking necessarily for a change in language, more a matter of an agreement to adopt a practice.
Should we consider the ZBA language that the clerk gave us a copy of for public hearing?
I think we should consider that.
All right, let's have that discussion.
So the ZBA has put in their meeting minutes that we would, that they will deliberate after, give at least one meeting's worth of time before they make a decision on something that comes out, unless, of course, it was something that was easy to make a decision on, clear-cut kind of thing that could happen in that particular day. And they've just spelled it out in their meeting minutes, that that was something that they could do.
I think the language that's here, it says unless a vote is otherwise taken, to act the same night as the hearing. So first of all, it would be a procedural vote to say, we'd like to act on this tonight. And then you'd have a vote to actually, or a motion to actually act on whatever was before the Board at that point. And that's very easily added to item J under Section 7, public hearings on Page 6.
I'm curious, the planner has any knowledge of other practices of other townships?
You are the only township that I've worked with that has the requirement to table to the next meeting. You could have, with the language that was provided by the clerk tonight, you would have been able, let's take the PUD ordinance, for example, the deletion of it. You would have been able to enact that vote and then had the public hearing last month and then taken action that night to send the deletion of the PUD to the Township Board. That's a non-controversial ordinance. If it works for the township to take another month, that's fine. But you're the only community that I've worked with in 23 years that has that procedure. But it's what's right for the township. There is no, there is no right procedure, other than the right procedure for the township. And a law, I guess.
Any other opinions?
So if the motion didn't pass, we wouldn't vote on it? Not everybody agreed to something like that?
We could conceivably, for example, hold the public hearing and then, and then still move forward, hold it off until the next meeting. Or we could conceivably decide that we just like to go ahead and, and complete it now.
If this was in your, this was in your bylaws, after your public hearing, somebody on the Board could make a motion to either, A, take the vote that evening, or B, this is, this is an important discussion, we need time to think about it. So I support, you know, the table meeting until the next month.
I don't think we'd have to have a motion to table it till the next month. By default, it is that.
Correct, correct.
We'd have to have a vote to not take it and act on it at that meeting.
We did that a couple times, too, in the past.
So the default is deliberate?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a reason why it's set up like that now that protects us and the township?
So the previous planner, who was with us for over 20 years, he felt it's only fair to the public and for you guys, especially the ZBA, to listen to what the public has to say. And then it gives you 30 days to check the information out, to check any, or maybe you want me to give you additional information. So it gives you that time to make sure everything is in order before you actually make a motion.
Haste makes waste.
Yeah, I think personally, I'd like to have 30 days. I hear what the public says, sometimes things don't sink in for a couple of days.
Well, even at our last hearing, it was the last time people spoke, it took me a couple of days to have everything register. So I don't mind that. But I'd like, Justin, your verbiage of, did you say non-constructive?
Non-controversial.
Non-controversial, yes, I think that is...
When it's pretty upfront.
Right, right.
And we have in front of us the great example of the PUD, which, other than a few people wondering what the PUD was, yeah.
Sounds terrible. Don't want it.
Well, we have two items, therefore, that would be potential changes to the draft bylaws. One would be the, of course, this language comparable to that Item 9 from the ZBA regarding the ability to close out an item the same day as a public hearing at our, at our option, which would require a vote. And the other item is the reversal of reports in public forum and the agenda sequencing.
Motion required to...
We could...
Include the exceptions?
We could include those two items as exceptions to the draft and then request it, and then approve the bylaws, actually.
I think you just reviewed the final copy after those corrections have been taken.
So I move we accept the bylaws with the two exceptions to be added and assume that they are added, that we'll vote on this.
Well, we could vote on it now.
Last amendment right now.
Yeah, okay.
But it will be added with the assumption it's added.
Yeah, it'd be like adopting minutes as amended.
The second to motion.
Any other discussion?
No.
Could a roll call vote?
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Jenny Eller?
Yes.
Derek Musgrave?
Yes.
Secretary Lundee? Yes. Vice Chair Benz?
Yes.
Chair King?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the solar energy ordinance review. This is a, again, simply a review with no necessary action taken care of, required. This is a, this got into the Board package last week, and hopefully everyone had a chance to look that over. And I'd like to allow the planner to introduce where it stands and lead off any discussion.
So, I know we've been talking about this for a little while. What you have tonight is a refinement of direction on solar energy systems for accessory use only. Meaning that the two drafts that you have, uh, the one that has our letterhead on it and then the other, uh, that does not have our letterhead, our language that we've prepared for communities just to deal with home-based or business-based onsite power generation to support or back up that house or business. Meaning, somebody wants to have a backup generator, solar powered on their property, this is it. This does not allow for utility level solar development.
Okay.
No five acres, no 10 acres, uh, no 100 acres, 600 acres. This is for the sole purpose of being on somebody's property or an individual business to provide backup power support to that individual facility. Both of these texts are, are very similar. They're not the same, and so what I really wanted to do is give you a month to sort of sit and think on this and how you would really like to see this, if you wanted to see this in this community. And, uh, Public Act 233, which regulates the large-scale utility systems for wind energy, battery energy storage, and solar energy, um, is still in effect. That is still, um, a law that is being challenged by many townships through the Michigan Public Service Commission. But at this point, I, I, with it being in court, I kind of see two things happening with it. One, uh, that the court system resolves it and makes a lot of corrections on behalf of those township requests. Or two, we're gonna have a new governor next year, uh, we have a new House and Senate right now, and, uh, our current governor will not repeal, even though that language was put through this House two weeks ago and approved by the House. It's gonna stall in the Senate, but, but my feeling, gut feeling is, is, um, with a new administration coming in next year, there's a good chance that law goes away altogether. So I don't wanna take the time to put all the work and effort into crafting that ordinance, it's, it's state author, state authorized site, uh, essentially, if it's over a certain size.
This is stuff that'll affect us.
With that?
This one here would affect us.
This one would, yes. Uh, what is not addressed is anything that is larger than accessory scale, single property use. Uh, we are not putting that in the ordinance, as the nature of our laws, our zoning is permissive, meaning if it's stated, it's allowed, if it's not stated, it's prohibited. So if the state can cite the big projects and we can allow people to have their individual projects, in between, we're not permitting. When I say in between, that's anything over, uh, somebody's individual personal use.
Does it restrict anyone from li, having solar as their primary energy source?
Not as long as it's for their own, own property.
Yeah, private, yeah.
Yep, so from the power generator to the property.
Making sure DTNE is not part of this.
Right, yeah. So, uh, we, we can discuss this tonight, but really what I wanted to do is make sure that you got it before this meeting, so I could introduce this and kind of talk about it with you this evening, let you spend some time to think on it, just like we talked about with the bylaws, and then be able to have a full discussion on this at your next planning commission meeting with some clarity of direction, as one of these two documents more appropriate for the township? As the, the heights that I've highlighted in here, uh, five foot above the roof, maximum height, or, uh, where do they fit in the slade yard setback, front yard setback, rear yard setback? We want, we want all of those answers, but I want you to just kind of take the time to think about what this is and what it isn't. If that makes sense.
Is, does it, is this a current ordinance that it doesn't township has right now?
No, no, this would be a new ordinance.
Okay.
Proposed draft, then?
Yeah.
So I saw the yellow highlighting in the, in the, in the first iteration, yet it's, it, is that supposed to illustrate where it differs from the second?
No, that was, that was me wanting to point out, to remember what I wanted to point out, uh, for you to take a look at. You'll see, some of the language is very similar.
Yes.
Uh, some of the heights of the other ordinance are a little lo, higher or lower, vice versa. I, I highlighted it here for myself to make sure to be able to, to see it and, and remind you of the things that I kind of really wanted you to think about, uh, like that item D on the first one where it says 50%. I have that highlighted because I don't know if that's the right number or not. It could be, it could be. It's gonna be, it's gonna be what the township feels is important. Uh, so anywhere on that first page, that, or that first document where you see some highlighting, that was really me more so wanting to remind myself of the things that I'd like you to consider. And it's not encompassing to that either. If you want something else, if you want more restrictive, you can have more restrictive. Uh, this is a wide open, a wide open draft right now, so we can, we can take it in any direction you choose.
Do you have the know whether, um, Michigan is, does reverse metering?
They do some net metering, uh, whereas, so if you have onsite solar generation, and you produce more than you need, you can sell it back to the utility at, at the wholesale cost, but if you need power from the utility, then you buy it at the retail cost. There is, uh, some laws that are being drafted with, with help of DTE and Consumers Energy that will allow for what they call community scale solar, which would be these 600 acre sites, it would be five, 10, 20 acre sites, that would be small scale utility generation. Right now, we don't have that, but it is something they're looking at, which would be up to the municipality locally to decide where those are cited or how they're cited, not under the purview of the state, like large scaling, you know, uh, utility generation.
Are there any other differences between the two different, um, ways you have things phrased here you'd like to bring to our attention, or?
No, and this is just a sample of, of draft, um, of the communities that I work in. I can see if I can find other language, uh, and then I'll also, again, go back and verify with the Township Association as well as, uh, Michigan State University Extension, who did a report, uh, on rural zoning for utility projects. Most of those reports are generated towards larger scale or community scale, not accessory structure scale, but I'll see what I can find between now and then, if I find something that's, um, you know, worthwhile, I'll make sure to get it to Pauline and have her sent it to you before the next meeting.
And just to make sure I understood you correctly previously, um, the current machinations you see going on at the state level, you don't think will affect the accessory, uh...
No, 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 the accessory structure is gonna be accessory structure. That's, that's gonna be your, your local control. It's only when you get to 50 megawatts of solar or battery energy storage, or 100 megawatts of wind, that the state's going to step in right now.
Uh, so as no action is required on this, this tonight, we just, it was informed, information only, and we can digest that and, and perhaps have it on the agenda for the next meeting to, for further discussion after everyone's had a chance to, uh, think about it some more.
Sounds good.
Any other discussion before we move on? Okay, we are now at the public forum, uh, forum portion of our agenda. Uh, this is an opportunity for the public to, uh, address the, uh, the Planning Commission and the chair. Uh, will we listen? We don't respond or dialogue? Uh, please state your name, and, uh, if necessary, limit yourself to three minutes. That's typically not a problem. Uh, the, but it, it really only becomes an issue when we have a lot of people that want to address the, uh, Planning Commission. That said, I'd like to open up the public forum, it's six forty.
My name is Svenner Wright, and I'm here for Copper Hills Call Course. I just wanna state something that'll go on the record regarding, uh, item two be in your agenda. We at Copper Hills just wanna make sure that Copper Hills and Copper Hills Development is excluded from this ordinance change. You have stated that it is based on the consent judgment. We would like that language in the ordinance, so there's no misunderstanding for the future. In the future, the wastewater treatment facilities flow will change back to its original intended output, and this will happen as more households are added to the system. So we just wanna make sure that this ordinance will exclude our development. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have, uh, doesn't appear we have anyone else, uh, from the public, uh, desiring to address the Planning Commission? In that case, we will close the public forum at six forty-one. Are there any commissioner reports? Probably not, since our township board members has an excused absence, and we, we still have yet to appoint, uh, get a new member on the zoning board of appeals. But here's your chance to say anything if you have not voiced it yet. Okay? In that case, the last item on the agenda is adjourning. Does, uh, get a, a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, that works good.
Motion carried.